This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us this evening. We are physically present in the school library. Due to school mandates and in order to maintain physical distancing, we are not yet able to welcome community member participants to board meetings in person. We do thank you for joining us virtually until we can physically gather together again. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. An executive session was held at 6 o'clock this evening to discuss confidential personnel issues. Thank you. Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please? All members are present. Thank you. Item 2.0 is our public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by 6:25 this evening via email or online form. Tonight, we have had no request for public comment. Item 3.1, may I have a motion to adopt tonight's meeting agenda as presented?
I'll move.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Moving on to item 4.1, we have two presentations. The first is Keystone State Challenge Academy.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of talking with Mr. Little and Mr. Rodolsky, oh, about a week and a half, two weeks ago, about an exciting thing that they're starting out at the Gap, and they're here to talk to the board about their project and what's going on. Can you hear me now? Okay. They're here to talk to us about the Keystone State Challenge Academy and give us a little overview of what's going to be happening in our school district.
Thank you very much, Dr. Buck and members of the board. I'm Brigadier General Stephen Rodolsky, or Steve. Alongside me is Brigadier General Edward Ted Little. I am the Program Director for the Keystone State Challenge Academy, and Ted is my Deputy Director. Thank you for taking the opportunity tonight to allow us to talk to you and give us a little bit of, give you a little bit of overview of what we're doing with the Keystone State Challenge Academy and introduce you to it, and look for potential opportunities in the future to work with your school district and ourselves. The National Guard Youth Challenge Program is a nationwide program in over 40 states with over multiple academies and new challenge programs in 31 states and territories. It's really focused on 16 to 18-year-old dropouts or students who are potentially looking to not being able to graduate from their parent high school. And really, the goal is to make them into productive citizens that graduate with some sort of credential in order to then return back to their home schools, go on to post school activities such as higher education, military, or volunteering, or jobs. We really anticipate on Slide 3 there being a life-changing opportunity for teenagers throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and to transform lives. We want to be one of the premier residential facilities within Pennsylvania as an alternative pathway for those students who are at risk. I want to tell you what the KSCA is not, and then we'll introduce a little bit the governance. It is not basic training. It is not a military feeder program. Only 7% of cadets who go through the program nationwide since its founding in 1993 have gone into any one of the services. So that's not its intent. It's not mandatory. It's a voluntary academy that both the cadet or student, as well as the parent, must agree to. And finally, it's not adjudicated. You cannot be sent there by a court. So it is a purely voluntary program that presents another opportunity for students or cadets who find themselves in the seams or the edges and can't finish up high school for whatever reason. On Slide 5, it just shows you a few of the statistics, and these are compiled from across the nation from 1993 to current year, 2021. And of note there, you note that there's over 12 million hours of service to community. Students are all required to, during their residential phase, serve the communities that surround them through a variety of options, and that helps them with future growth opportunities as well as exposure to opportunities that are out there in the community. Slide 6 really just talks about why we think partnership with the school district would be beneficial to both of us. We've been in talks with Pennsylvania Department of Education, Matt Stem, as well as Sherri Smith, several times over the last 12 months, and most recently, very involved in talking to them. And PD agrees that it is very favorable to look for an opportunity to partner with a school district. Now, obviously, we looked at our backyard, and you are here in our community. We share a lot of overlap between Fort Indian Town Gap and this school district, and we thought that would be an absolutely natural fit. So we look at all the potential school districts, and thought this would be the greatest one and the best fit for us and for you. Other states do this as well, as far as partnering with local school districts. Washington and Michigan, the academies, partner with local districts as well, and so we thought that would be an opportunity. We see it as an opportunity to provide your at-risk youth another venue, another course of action, another pathway as an outlet to get back on track. And whether they return to you after they attend the residential phase or move on after achieving a GED or some other method, we thought this would be a great opportunity. It could potentially offer new opportunities for district educators if we decide to continue down this path and explore it. Obviously, the opportunity to broadcast your participation and cooperation and collaboration with the KSCA would be advertised. There is definitive financial stability that might be also add to the school district here, and I'll get to the funding cycle in a little bit. And then the connection with Department of Military and Veterans Affairs in Fort Indian Town Gap. Both Ted and I are in the Guard as M-Day traditional soldiers for over 30 years, but we also were educators for over 23 years in local school districts within the Commonwealth, and we are currently state employees working for the Commonwealth. So I work, my boss is the Attorney General of Pennsylvania. But we definitely see the opportunity there. We're fully integrated into Fort Indian Town Gap, and so there are opportunities there if we decide to move forward. Seven and eight, just lay it down, I won't walk you through that entire thing, but the funding for us comes 75% from the federal government, 25% from the state government. And we're supervised by an advisory council, which is composed of three members of the Senate, three members of the House from Pennsylvania. So Representative Stan Saylor, for example, is the chairperson of the advisory council. We have representation from the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, the Attorney General and Deputy Army Air, and Tag is an ex-official member. Slide 9 just talks and shows a little bit, there was unanimous support for the Keystone State Challenge Academy to be brought to Pennsylvania by the governor, unanimous support in the Pennsylvania General Assembly, Pat Casey, Pat Toomey, or Robert Casey, Pat Toomey, 17 members of Congress, and then the Lebanon County Commissioners, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Ames, both wrote a letter of endorsement that was submitted to the National Guard Bureau in support of this program being established in Pennsylvania. As far as the other information that you see on Page 10, that just lists the requirements. I've kind of covered those already, but we're really focused on the 16 to 18-years-old. And then, as I said, it's not adjudicated, so they can't have a felony against them, and they've got to be accepted into the program after an application process, which we will interview them and then see if they are a good fit for the academy. And we do make modifications and adaptations as needed for those students that come into the academy. I'll pause there for a moment if you have any initial questions before I move on and just cover some of the highlights from the next couple of slides.
You said a good fit. What is a good fit?
You mean between the academy and the student?
Yep.
Absolutely. So the students are going to be looked at across eight core components that we evaluate them on. So we are an academy. It's an alternative education program. We do anticipate having the ability to take care of those students if they have IUDs, for example, right? If they have 504 plans. So there is that piece as well. We're going to look at the student, and do they have the physical ability to go through the program, because it is a quasi-military program. They're going to be up at 5:00 in the morning, they're going to go to bed at night so they can get eight hours of sleep. There is a physical component that's involved, the service to community. But also, as we go through the evaluation of the students as they come in from the orientation and for the interviews, we want to make sure that the desire is there and that there is buy-in from both the parent and the student to come to the academy. We'll also be talking directly with the school districts that send students from across Pennsylvania and talking to those counselors at the high schools and principals and getting their recommendations. Is this the best approach for this student at that time? A 22-week intensive, seven-days-a-week residential program is not for every student, but we feel that there is a broad population within Pennsylvania that could be a good fit. Thank you. You're welcome. Slide 11 just kind of talks about, again, it's two 22-week sessions per year, January to June, and then July to December, with a four-week break in between each one. And of critical note is the 12-month post-residential mentoring phase. So after the cadet leaves, he has proposed a mentor that will stick with him or her throughout the program, and then for the 12 months following, and we will maintain contact with the cadet and the mentor and the family to ensure that they are on the right track, either back at school, college, military, job, or volunteering for a required number of hours during the week.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, sir.
Mentors come from within the program or are they from the community?
No, the student is required to recommend two to three mentors when he or she enters the program with contact information. And then what happens over the course of about the next month, the first month they're in residence? We make contact with each of the mentors and determine, is it a good fit for that student and for the mentor? So they're from the community. Coaches, teachers, pastors, youth group leaders, doesn't matter, nobody in their direct family. So it's got to be somebody outside the family who's going to provide an alternative source for that student to get information and guidance from. And we train them over the course of the residential phase, those 22 weeks. We bring them in for several sessions, and we teach both the mentor, as well as the cadet and the mentor together, in separate and combined classes, so they understand the path forward, and they will graduate with a post-resident action plan, which will lay out the steps and the course of action for that student cadet to take forward during those 12 months. As I said, it is a quasi-military environment, but it is voluntary. They are not members of the military. They are not under contract. They're not soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines. And we have to create an environment where we'll have 24/7 coverage of those cadets through cadre that will be living and learning with them. And so we anticipate throughout there, you have the cadre mentors who are with them, we have the instructors who will be with them, we will have counselors on staff, behavioral health counselors with them as well, as well as all the support services needed at Fort Indian Town Gap to provide for both the staff and the cadets that are living on Fort Indian Town Gap. Slide 14 just shows you the eight core components, so you can see it as a holistic approach to improvement. Academic excellence is number one. We want these kids to be successful, whether they go down the credit recovery path or the GED path, and we anticipate doing both. But just as important is life coping skills, leadership, job skills, physical training, service to community, responsible citizenship. All those are the holistic approach, and it's been a proven track record since 1993 across the United States. As I said, the remaining slides, I'll let you leave at your leisure, but this is under, as you see on Slide 16, Act 51. It is part of the Military and Veterans Code. It is passed under House Bill 1338, so it is in law at the state legislature, signed by Governor Wolf, and it directs the Pennsylvania Department of Education to work with DMVA to facilitate this program, advertise it, and admit cadets into the program. And the last couple of slides just show you as far as the personnel on Slide 18. That's kind of what we're looking at as the organizational chart. Me at the top, decorated director, Ted Little here, and then we've got to do a lot of hiring. We've got four folks on board right now, and we anticipate, as we show on Slide 19, starting really in the summer of 2021, the intensive hiring of folks from across the board to fit all those organizational chart needs. So we'll be doing that over four waves or so. And then if you've ever been on the Gap, Slide 20 shows you Area 7, the East of Joint Force Headquarters where that's going to be. Of note, the state of Pennsylvania is building a 14,000-square-foot multipurpose building, you know, the Cafegio-matorium, that's going to go in there, and we're under negotiation right now to get that planning finalized, but an architect is hired, and then we anticipate breaking ground on that in the next six months and having it ready before the opening of the school in July of 2022. So we have about two years till we open, July of 2022, for our first class. And we anticipate initially about 130, 125, 30 cadets in residence. We anticipate graduating 100 or more, just due to the basic attrition rate that we see historically of about 20%, because the student can leave at any time he or she wants. They cannot be forced to stay. That concludes my brief. Thank you. This time, I'd be glad to take any questions or clarifications that you may have.
So what does it mean to partner with a school district, both for you and for Northern Lebanon?
Right, great question. So I know we've, this has been an intensive discussion over the last couple of weeks with Michigan and with Washington, who both partner with local school districts. And I think what they found was that local school districts have the expertise as far as hiring, vetting, evaluating instructors potentially. And so they, what they do is the local school district provides the educators in-house that would be teaching at the academy. And then we would partner with the school district to ensure that evaluations for those teachers could be done, and that hiring could be done by the school district, and then under the parameters that we're giving from National Guard Bureau. So that is one potential option as far as how we see this going forward. We also see it just as a benefit to interact with the school district. If you're going to have any opportunities to work on Fort Indian Town Gap, we can do that. But I think what they found is that they found the local expertise through the local school district to do the hiring, vetting, evaluations. And then in return for that, obviously, the Keystone State Challenge Academy would provide funding back to the school district from the 75-25 split we have with the federal government. Ted, do you see any other?
Well, gentlemen, thank you for coming. It's a really neat program. I was going to recommend an architect if you needed one, but you got that taken care of, I guess.
I can't talk about that.
And I assume we'll stay in touch as you go through the process and...
Absolutely. Yes, just thank you again for the opportunity. I know this is new, and you probably have a lot of questions you're going to walk out of here with. Feel free to reach out to either one of us, not a problem. We'll answer any question you have, but we just wanted to put it in front of you. And all we want to walk out of here with is, you know, this is something we might look at, but obviously, we fully understand that you've got to really look at it in depth, and more discussions have to take place if you want to move forward. So I appreciate that, but at least wanted to get it in front of you and pose the idea up there for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you are welcome. You do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'd like to listen to our architects.
It's probably a conflict of interest right now, so as much as I'd like to, I appreciate that, but thank you again. Thank you, doctor, for your opportunity tonight, and take care.
Thank you for joining us, gentlemen. This is a lot of information, but very exciting, and we look forward to discussions ahead.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, and John and Scott from Crabtree are here to talk to us tonight, and we had a chance, we spent some time with them yesterday, had a chance to see some of their buildings and admit it was fun and gets your mind going about potential things for our district, but they're going to update us on where we are in the process. Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
The opportunity to be in front of you, we've been remote a few times, so we're excited to be here and anxious for the project to commence with the board's previous authorization. So we're very excited to share kind of an overview of the entire design process. Tonight, this evening also, Scott is joining us. As our team expands, Scott's principal of the firm and an architect who will also be participating in the planning and design processes as we move forward. So this evening, there's really three things we're going to talk about, kind of some clarity to big picture, what our role is, talk about our responsibilities and the kinds of things that we will be coordinating through the process and reporting back to the board, a little bit more about the timeline, and we've kind of put durations to each of these phases of the design process to give you kind of a high-level overview, and then community engagement as we move through. So Slide 3 is kind of an in-depth description of our role at fairly high level. Obviously, we will be proceeding with the design of the new elementary school with the educational program that we've developed and we are continuing to further develop. We will be also providing oversight of all of the consultants involved from mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, and civil engineering. So all of those services will be coordinated very closely with Scott's effort and our effort moving through. We'll also be pursuing whatever approvals are necessary for the project and permitting to get you to a point of construction. We'll be talking a lot about the cost estimates as we move through and make sure that the scope of work is aligned with the budget and any changes to the cost estimate, and working closely with FIDAVIA, your CM, to do drawing reviews, also participate in their input on the cost estimate and any other suggestions and recommendations they have. Clearly, the schedule for the project is an important one, and that is also our responsibility to move this in an expeditious way to try to get the project to a bidding window to capture the most ideal bidding environment. So we're very aware of that, and we'll be maintaining the schedule and updating that along the way. We will be making more periodic board presentations as each of the major phases are completed to report back to you, give you updates on the progress of the design, any changes that are happening as we have community meetings, how that information is shared and developed and incorporated into the project as well. So essentially, the takeaway is we're here from design through occupancy until construction is complete to guide, to guide you in that process. The next slide is kind of a graphic of that representation that shows us essentially at the center of all of the various tasks that are going to be needed for the project. So we will help streamline the communication with the superintendent and the administrative team to keep that information coming and keep the project moving quickly. The next slide is where we currently are, schematic design. Gary mentioned that we've just conducted some building tours, and we're talking about very high-level building organizational models to facilitate the design, the numbers of students, address issues on the site, and start talking about preliminary site design concepts and building system analysis and recommendations. On the left, you'll just see kind of this organizational structure of how we're thinking about the building might be organized with a Main Street access point to help separate the academic wings from the public areas, the gymnasiums and cafeterias and so forth. So this is not representative of the final design. It's conceptual to illustrate really the essence of schematic design, which represents about a two- or three-month process. And again, along the bottom, you can see of each slide, by the end of November, we'd need to complete that schematic design task in order to receive your approval to move to the next slide, which is design development, also roughly a three-month duration. This is really the focus of the interior design team. As I mentioned, our team will continue to expand. Our interior design team will be meeting with the administrative staff, teachers and staff to talk about the needs of the individual spaces and literally going into every single space and developing a thoughtful design for their functionality. We'll be continuing to update the cost of the project, any issues pertaining to the schedule that may have changed, and also start talking about material selection. And that was another benefit of the tours that we talked and walked through to get a reaction on the kinds of materials and things that we're planning, things that are in line with the budget, and ultimately, what's the district's vision for some of those kinds of finishes. In design development also is the Act 34 public hearing for any new building, which is a requirement. So there is a whole separate timeline for that to illustrate the sequence of the advertisement, the actual hearing, and the waiting period that we will be participating with and assisting you through that process as well. The largest scheduling item tends to be land development plan approval for permitting, and so we will be constantly updating the board on issues that pertain to the schedule and/or cost as they relate to the site design. So again, civil engineering is a big part of that task. Once we get past design development, Slide 7 is construction documentation, also roughly three months. That is really where we're taking all the design decisions and putting them into a format for the purpose of bidding and for construction. So we'll be developing high-level detailed drawings and building sections, the specifications. We'll be talking to you as a board about possible alternates, give you a menu of alternates to allow you to, on bid day, based on where the actual bids fall, to allow the board some flexibility in choosing and making adjustments to the scope of work. Again, cost estimate and schedule will be updated as well as code compliance. When we get in that level, that is really where we're going to be dealing with, not only from billing code, but also the municipal approval process for land development as well. Once that duration is completed, Slide 8 is the bidding and award phase. Bidding generally is about a four-month period to allow the contractors adequate time to review the drawings, obtain cost estimates and proposals from subcontractors. We participate in obviously issuing all the documents, responding to questions during construction, any changes or questions that you have as a board, such that we arrive at bid day, receive the bids from at least a minimum of four prime contractors that we're required to issue contracts, and then start to really look over the bids, talk more about those alternates. Where were we from a budget perspective? Where did the actual bids come in? And then what does the board see in terms of the contract award? So helping you through that process of deciding what alternates contractors will be determined by the base bid, and then awarding a contract and a notice to proceed for construction to commence. Once we are at that part, next slide...
I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Who evaluates the bids? Maybe I missed that. Is that something you guys do or are they...
Sure, it's a good question. We will do our initial evaluation particularly based on budget, where we expected the numbers to all fall by contract. I'm sure we will also be getting input from FIDAVIA as well to make recommendations on, you know, these alternates fell in line with where we thought, or this is a really exceptional value, or we may say, that price is pretty high. Maybe there was a material issue availability that drove the cost of something. So we will be providing a recommendation to the board to consider.
John, if I heard you correctly, I thought you said that bidding typically takes four months?
The bidding period is four weeks, if I said...
Four months?
Yeah, excuse me. Four weeks, and then the award period can range from two to three weeks. So it's about a two-month period from the time that we issue drawings to the award.
Thank you. That forestalls my question.
Sure, sure. Yeah, that was not the scheduling acceleration I know you're looking for. Thanks for clarifying. Okay, so then we head into construction. Once the contract has been awarded, all the permits, I should say, all permits in place, contracts are awarded. We continue to be your representative. We will oversee and manage the project through construction with making recommendations for reviewing the progress of the work relative to the payment application. So we will be reviewing that to tell you that, yes, these payments are in line with the work completed, oversight of the contractor's schedule to say, yes, they are on schedule or perhaps they are not, and what the remedy would be to get the project back on schedule. There will be questions, there will be issues, there will be some unforeseen conditions. All of those responsibilities fall in our kind of wheelhouse to provide you with recommendations and guidance on how to move the project forward the most cost-effectively and in the most time-effective manner. We don't have the final duration of construction just yet. It could be 18 to 22 months. We think based on what we know about the project now, that's a pretty good indication of the duration of construction. The last slide, we wanted to talk about community engagement. We're thinking about, and we've been talking with the administrative team on ways to virtually get input from... on ways to virtually get input from the public. Uh, the slide image is showing, um, in the normal environment where we would all meet in a room such as this and probably take that wall and fill it with fifty or seventy items of images. We hand over ten green dots, ten red dots to participants, whether they're students, teachers, staff, board, parents. And we talk about, you know, placing green dots on the images and things that you want to talk about. And then why are there red dots on certain images? And why are there red and green right next to each other? And so we just had that kind of collaborative discussion about, um, images, aesthetics, uh, performance-related items, um, that kind of just transcend the architectural plans. It's a discussion, uh, between the community, the staff, the teachers, and the administrative team. So we're thinking of ways to have that, to comply with the meeting limits that we are all faced with, to still try to get that important public input, uh, early in the process. And we've shared some preliminary dates with the administrative team to start talking about when those dates would fall that coincide with these phases that, that make the most sense. So that's our kind of high-level overview of the, from design through construction. And I certainly would be happy to answer any questions that anyone had also.
I'll just chime in, uh, that, uh, I, I sent dates out to the board. I didn't hear anything in terms of conflict, so I will send those to you first thing in the morning. As soon as those are confirmed, we have a press release ready to go out, uh, to not only talk about the project, but to also then mention the dates for the public so that they would know what those dates are. Uh, the governor's, you tell me, the governor's decision today, does that allow us to do something potentially like in the auditorium physically?
Yeah, pursuant to, uh, it, the gathering limitations, you could have a certain number of individuals as long as they're able to remain socially distant and they keep their masks on. So that would be, that could be difficult relative to the getting up onto a wall to do some things.
Yeah, I think we're content...
But they can spread it out, or they can go one at a time. There's some ways to do that.
Well, I, I would even be content with, if, we could potentially use the auditorium, but the visioning exercise actually, I think, reaches more people virtually. You could reach more people virtually than I think you could reach necessarily with the wall, because you have limited participation with the wall component. But yeah, it would be hard to achieve the, the social distancing with that. So, but there's some other options there that, as of even yesterday, we didn't know existed.
Would it be possible to adapt any of this to an outside type of event?
Uh, with weather like this, sure. I mean, that's possible.
Yeah.
We've got walls outside too.
Well, we have some tents too, but we can open up the sides and have some protection. But anyway, we, we have dates, the, the date in October and the date in November for, uh, public meetings. And, uh, like I said, as soon as I get confirmation from you guys that those are okay, we'll move forward with advertising. And the other question I had received from the board, uh, as we get together, and I'm, I'm hoping to kind of combine for you guys so that we're not tying you up on multiple nights, but, um, want to talk a little bit about our vision and mission statement, but also, uh, I had a request about, uh, the financial part of it to get a little more in-depth there. Uh, Leanne Martin, who's joining us virtually tonight, uh, is working with Brad Remming to, uh, put together those numbers so that we can present those to you as well, so that you can see the financial ramifications, uh, of the projects.
These, this packet here just pertains to the K-6 building, is that right?
Uh, no, actually...
Would the renovations from the high school all be included in this timeline as well, or...
Well, we've built this timeline primarily, can you hear me? This turned off.
The button should be up to be on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, this, this particular schedule really is focused on the new elementary and then also whatever field house, because of the timing we shared with that type of project for it to be included for bidding to, to try and garner the best possible number. Um, on our overall schedule, in fact, I think we just talked about this yesterday with the administrative team, the middle school and high school project is still on schedule. In terms of timing, we were showing it to start design once the elementary school went to bid, but it could move at whatever discretion the board would like to.
So on the second to last slide, uh, on the construction, eighteen to twenty-two months, that timeline at the bottom represents that, but I assume that should be twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four in those last two years?
Yes.
That wasn't an attempt to show that it could be concurrent? That would extend it out to twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
As John mentioned, that, that piece of the middle school, high school is its own sliding bar that can move up or back wherever, wherever you desire, based on, you know, usually you look at that end date, when do you want to target occupancy of that? And, uh, and it would probably tie into your funding scenarios as well.
As always, a pleasure to have you. Thank you for this detailed presentation and for walking us through this very slowly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you guys don't have to stay either, unless you'd like.
Thank you.
Item number five notes that the minutes shall note that public notice was given for the meeting in accordance with Act Eighty-four of nineteen eighty-six. Notices and advisements of these meetings will carry the intent that limited business may be conducted on any scheduled meeting date. We do have some items for board action this evening, that is items, uh, number six point one through six point four. Um, I'll pass that to Dr. Messinger to introduce.
Yeah, item six point one is revised organizational chart, including a job description, uh, for Director of Virtual Instruction. Uh, item six point two, uh, as you know, um, we're heading to an administrative structure uh, where we are looking at a secondary model instead of the middle school and high school. And that would change, uh, Dr. Winger's title from Assistant High School to Assistant Secondary Principal. Uh, item six point three are two reassignments. Uh, we're excited to have Mr. Vogt return and add support to the elementary, uh, school as we restructure, and also excited, uh, to have Mrs. Hassler, uh, help us with the Director of Virtual Instruction position as we tackle the challenges that this year has brought upon us. Uh, item six point four, and he is here with us tonight, uh, would be then the, uh, recommendation of the approval of Dr. Peter Ebert to the position of Secondary Principal. Those are our items for action tonight.
May I have a motion to approve items six point one through six point four?
Motion to approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Would be one to...
I could chime in and just say, "Welcome, Dr. Ebert. It's great to have you be a part of Northern Lebanon." Did you prepare a speech?
Sure.
You really don't have to talk if you don't want to. Thank you. Great to have you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Dr. Ebert. We are excited to welcome you to the team. Now moving on to our items for discussion this evening on our consent calendar. We have items seven point one, seven point two, seven point three. Dr. Messinger?
Yes, our normal items approval of the minutes, our approval of the student activity count, and our cash disbursements.
Are there any questions about those items? Okay, uh, moving on to budget and finance.
Yeah, we have an updated list of drivers from DB Fisher to approve. Also van drivers for Yellow Breach's Education Center and refunding of outstanding general obligation bonds. That is the, uh, those are the bonds that, uh, Brad Remming, you know, came and talked to us about, um, Mrs. Martin. I know we had information today that the rates are actually better than we had anticipated, and, uh, the savings are actually a little bit more, but she'll be bringing those for us next week. Uh, in addition to that, whoops, I'm moving ahead. I'm sorry.
You can keep going if you'd like. Are there any questions about budget and finance? All right, now we'll move on to buildings. Actually, there are no items for buildings and grounds. Um, uh, moving forward to extracurricular.
Yes, some additional coaches, uh, to approve. Uh, also have, um, begun the list of winter coaches that is attached for your approval. Um, this is a, right now, this is, this is where we typically approve the senior class trip. Uh, obviously, at this time, the district is not doing trips, and that's to be reevaluated, and we understand that potentially, um, this, this would be a trip that would not happen. Uh, but there are some preliminary things to take care of if, if things change. Um, so that is on there for your approval as it would be annually at this time.
Any questions about those items?
Dr. Messinger, when do we need to approve the other trips that are planned? There's a Costa Rica trip and some other ones.
Well, those trips have been approved. I'm working with, um, both of the, um, both individuals leading that. Uh, we're going to be making a decision, uh, on the Costa Rica trip, uh, this month.
Okay.
And it looks like the Spain trip, I believe, next month.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on, we have several items under curriculum.
Uh, yes, we, uh, have started back into the board policies. Exciting. Brad, Pat always loves the days of the board policies. Um, and we have several updated policies for you. Uh, we also have a library book purchase for you to approve. Um, we'd like to congratulate and inform you about the newest members of the National Technical Honor Society that are listed there. And that is it for that.
Any questions on those items? Okay, and last one is human relations.
Yes, we'll have a list of several, uh, professional substitutes, uh, in addition to classified substitute. Uh, number three, we have the following, the listed leave requests that are there. Uh, in addition, uh, the following employments, uh, pending the completion of their requirements. Uh, a mentor, the Swiss does a mentor, uh, tenure for one of our teachers. Also approval of Colita Gears and Natalie Snyder to service code department chairs for the Communication Arts Department. And then to approve the advancement of academic credits of Daniel Rice to Masters plus fifteen.
Any questions on those human relations items? Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. Motion has passed. This eve, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.